We congregate in these council chambers and we pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing if you will. Last week, the city of Norwood lost a member of a prominent family in Norwood and a former council member, Dan Romanello. Dan was on council in the 70s and 80s, I believe, a very active member of Kiwanis and was an active member of a Holy Trinity parish. So I'd like to extend our condolences to his family and if we could have a moment of silence in respect for his passing.
Mr. Bonzal.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sankar.
Here.
Mr. Braden.
Here.
All members are present. You might notice that there are new chairs at your desks. My understanding is that TriHealth, when they moved from their older offices into their newer ones, had some excess chairs and some filing cabinets that they offered to the city of Norwood and so they are complements of TriHealth. So I'd like to acknowledge them. Perhaps we'll do a resolution in their honor. Lots of office furniture was donated to the city. Do we have any amendments to the agenda? I have none. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to request that we move Ordinance 5, the Ordinance amending Section 505.15 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Norwood, up to before or after reports of standing committees of council. And I'd like to request that we move the ordinance creating the retiree benefit program, the third reading of ordinances, after the introductory reading of ordinances. So the reason for the First Amendment is, you know, we have our wonderful bunny lobby in the House today and so I don't want to make them wait too long to hear what happens there. And then the reason for the Second Amendment is because we don't actually know what's going to happen with the introductory readings of ordinances with the C-9 Trust and the retirees and the Millennium Plan. So we don't, we can't pass an ordinance creating a new program until we know what's happening to the other items. So I would just like to offer those amendments to the floor.
Is there a second to that? Second. Second by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I thought as it relates to the ordinances we're considering, the creation and the repeal and termination, I thought we had a speaker who would be with us.
He's here.
Okay.
And we can, I would like to add him on under discussion. I would like to add him on to next on the agenda so we don't have him sitting here all evening as well. So he may have some information for us.
Would that be a separate amendment to have someone address council?
If you will amend your motion. And Mr. Clark, your second?
Yes, absolutely.
So is there any other discussion?
Nope. I just wanted to make sure we had all our speakers where they needed to speak.
So as I understand it, the motion to amend is to move ordinance under introductory reading of ordinances, Ordinance Number 5 for prohibited animals would be considered after request to address council on agenda items. And then the third reading of the ordinance under J1, the first, the third reading of ordinance would become after, that would become the ordinance number five, actually it would be after the last consideration of ordinances. And then Mr. Schlatman be permitted to address council right after the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Ms. Hanahan?
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused here. Why would we wait till after the ordinance to have Mr. Schlatman speak?
No, I'm going to have him speak first.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
No, I'm going to have him do, speak right after the acceptance of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President.
Any other discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. Just one point of clarity. I believe the original motion was to have the number five move after the reports of standing committees.
There aren't any reports of standing committees. So what, okay, we can do that.
Okay.
That's fine. But there aren't any, there aren't any reports of standing committees on the agenda, so we're okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Mr. Sankar?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to also amend the agenda if we could. I'd like to place the treasurer's report for April and May that were in our packet, but it's not on the, under P Communication. I would like to add that, so it's part of the minutes.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Bonzal? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to minutes of the June 12, 2018 meeting, which were distributed by email. It's your pleasure, Mr. Clark.
Move that we have the minutes approved as of read.
Second by Mr. Braden, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no public hearings or requests to address, to address council on agenda items, but we will take that up at the time. Mr. Schlatman is here from Benovations. Would you please come forward, sir? If you'll give us your name and the company you're with and we'll go from there.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Schlatman. I am with Benovations. I am Director of Employee Benefits and Vice President of CAI Insurance Agency, which is the owner of Benovations.
Excuse me, I don't know if this microphone's not working. I can't hear a thing.
Probably need to pull it closer. Take it out, hold it up to you.
All right, let me start again. Is that better?
Yeah.
My name is Kevin Schlatman. I am Vice President of CAI Insurance Agency, which is the wholly owner of Benovations, which is a healthcare third-party administrator. Appreciate the opportunity to address council and third parties this evening.
So I think the question that council has been dealing with and that we have been trying to deal with, with the financial recovery plan, is the payments that are owed to retirees from 2016 and '17 and then '18. And I know you and I spoke and I did share your letter that you sent to me about your plan to get caught up. And I just wondered if you could expand upon that, if you have any new information.
Sure. Everyone here is very familiar with the issues associated with 2016, 2017, funding of claims for the retiree plan. I don't feel like we need to go into that here today unless there are questions specifically about that. There were obviously long delays in funds being made available to issue checks to retirees. That presented substantial difficulties that we don't often have attempting to process claims from 2016.
Excuse me. Matt, I hate to interrupt. We still cannot hear anything. The air, you got it.
Is this any better?
Yes, it does. Let me see.
It doesn't help that the air conditioning isn't good. I gotta thank you guys.
Tell me. Okay. Is this better?
Much better.
I will try to speak up. Okay. I can also speak quickly, so if I get moving too fast, please slow me down. Everyone here is fully aware of the funding issues associated with processing and paying or making funds available for us to release claims for retiree, the retiree plan for claims 2016, 2017. As we moved into '18 and into the financial recovery, it became clear that it was difficult for us to reconcile many years of claims that had been processed and made available to pay. It was more challenging for us to adjudicate those claims as a result of duplicate submissions, submissions from providers, submissions from retirees. It was harder than we expected it to be, there's no question. That has resulted in a delay in getting claims paid out to retirees. So for that, I will apologize. It was something that is not common for us to deal with. It is something that our systems and our methodologies struggle to deal with. So I do apologize for that. When we issued payments and reimbursements for 2016 originally, when funds were made available, it came to light that some members did not receive the amount that they received, that they expected to receive. Those calls came to our office. We acted upon those calls. That was part of the letter that was issued prior to the last meeting. We undertook an audit of all claims that were processed and paid for 2016 and 2017 reimbursements. That audit was completed last week. It was reviewed and it was sent to, I believe Brenda is the individual that receives the funding requests. I did confirm that via text message from Sarah earlier this evening. If it was not received by Brenda last week, it was received today. She did go to check to see if it had been sent last week. She couldn't find it, so she sent it again today just to be certain. That funding request should resolve all 2016 and 2017 claims that are outstanding that we are aware of. I also received confirmation this afternoon at 4:15 that the premium reimbursements for the C-9 Trust, as well as any pharmacy, unreimbursed pharmacy claims that had been submitted through June, should be available for funding request on Monday. I have not seen that report. That was what I was advised, yes.
Can you clarify two things? One, when you say through June, are you talking about 2018 now?
Yes.
Okay. And when you say that funding request was made, are you indicating the amount that the city owes the company?
The amount the city owes the retirees. So we receive requests for reimbursement from the retirees, whether it's premium or whether it's a pharmacy or medical claim. We process that claim. We then send the request to the city to fund those claims.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Questions? Yes. Mr. Thompson?
Thanks for being here. So I just wanted to clarify. So as of now, all claims, I guess, through June that you've received from retirees have at least been through processing. I realize they haven't been paid out, but everything now has made it through processing and at this point, if it's a payout, it's waiting on the city to send the money to Benovations so that Benovations can send them.
The way it works internally is once, once this is received by the city, then I believe Mr. Gears generates, Brenda, through the mayor's office, Brenda generates a requisition and a purchase order.
Mm-hmm.
A requisition. Mr. Stitt's office issues a purchase order, assuming there's money in the fund, sends to the treasurer's office and they cut a check, pay them, and then they're able to reimburse each individual. Jim, you got anything else you want to?
Today, the red one, so it's being worked on now.
That's what he got today?
Yeah. So that's being processed.
Whatever's in red here. Is that correct, the way that?
Correct. That's a note that I got today that basically says that Brenda's working on everything up through May at this time. She talked to Jane in my office today about it, but it's still going through that initial processing. As soon as they've processed it in the Safety Service Director's office, then it'll come to us and we'll usually cut a check within a week.
Just to clarify, this is, these are requests that we've made available, made to you through May. This is not reimbursement for premiums through May of 2018.
Correct. As far as anything that you've sent and is being processed now.
Correct. Just wanted to clarify that so that everybody's on the same page. And then just as a point of clarification so that everybody is aware, we adjudicate claims, when a check is issued, it's issued to us, we actually take it and deposit it in an account that the city owns. So we never have any control or take control of any of the funds. It goes directly into an account that the city owns against which we then issue checks for reimbursement to members and to retirees or to providers, depending on how the bills present to us. Yes?
Thank you. Ms. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. I need to start off with, I'm a recipient of this plan. I've been dealing with this for quite a while. I have the same issues as everybody else has with getting paid. But one of the bigger, or one of the really disturbing things is the customer service. I, as a councilperson, have called. I, as a client, have called or, you know, a recipient. You know, they'll say they'll call you back. And this is a problem that I hear from our retirees all the time, that they never call back. And I know it's true because they don't call me back. And it's frustrating. And I really think that that's something that needs to be important and you need to really step up your game with because, you know, this is their money and they're counting on it. Also, you said the outstanding bills from '16 and '17. I know from residents that I'm hearing or recipients that there are bills from before then that aren't paid. And they've been calling and talking to either Marissa or Sarah. And they can't get any response. So what are you playing, I mean, are you aware there are bills before '16 and '17 that aren't paid?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Well, apparently there are quite a few and they can't get, they can't get a response on those. There also, there is apparently confusion with the dental and eye plan and where they're going to put that. If they're taking, some people are telling me they're being told it's coming out of the millennium. Yeah, that they have been told that. I just think there's just a really a whole lot of confusion there. But I think responding to these retirees who are waiting for their money, and we know, I know that there are retirees who are going to collections because little bills haven't been paid. And it's really not fair to these people. And I'm just asking that, you know, you step up on the customer service and at least explain to, you know, the recipients of where, when their money, if their money's coming, where it's come, when it's coming, and what's going on with their, with their claims. I know at one time I called, it was last year, and they couldn't pull up a claim for me. And I was told that they weren't processed in the computer, they were in the back in boxes. And I said, "Well, I need to know A, B, and C." And they told me they would go look. They came back and said, "I can't possibly find it. There are hundreds of boxes of Norwood's claims." And that's kind of disturbing to hear.
That doesn't sound like something that should have been, that doesn't sound like our situation at all. So I don't understand that.
Well, that's what I get from your representative.
Yep. Okay. So I appreciate that feedback and I'll make sure that we make some improvements.
There was a question that came up about administration fees. Do you get a set fee or is the fees that you, that the city, that you get for administering, are they based upon the claims that you?
No, it's a fixed fee. It's always been a fixed fee per, in this case, retiree per month. That fee has not increased since 2012, at which point we took a fifty cent increase from 2011 and 2012. It has consciously stayed the same. We've done that in order to try and help the city deal with the financial issues that it had at the time. And it hasn't been increased in six years. Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, to the, on the fee, is that included like in the monthly premium? Is that built into the monthly?
There's a monthly invoice that's sent to the city. That includes stop-loss premium as well as our administrative fee.
Okay. That was one of the questions we had. Just a follow-up real quick.
Yes, sir.
As far as the process, when, you know, we have people say, "Well, we sent it in and they say they don't have it." When something, when they send something into your office, is it, you know, stuck in a file with, under City of Norwood until we get an opportunity to kind of enter it into the computer, like say under Joe Sankar?
No.
He filed a claim on June 16th and we can go into that and say, "Oh, yeah, Mr. Sankar, that hasn't been paid yet. We see that's still open. You filed that on October 16th." Is that, kind of walk me through the process of how the claims are handled? Like if some, if one of us would send, which we're not a part of it, but if we would send in, you know, a claim, whether it's, you know, prescription or Dr. Bill, is there a person in, one individual that handles things from the city of Norwood? Or is there a way of tracking these things easier than what we're hearing from some folks that, you know, that it's, there's no way they can tell you where these are?
I have two answers to that question. I have the way things normally work and I have a little bit of complication. So we have had system changes from 2015 to 2018, right? So we've had some complicating factors that typically don't arise. When you deal with a, I'll quote unquote, "normal" claim, 95% of those come to us electronically. Now, 95% of the retiree claims to us, claims come to us in paper.
Got you.
And so that's a little bit outside of our normal processing today. So we have to take that information in. We've got to try and match it up with what has been received by us in the past, data entry, and we go from there. But all of it is tracked, it's date stamped, whether it comes in by email, whether it comes in by fax. And it does exist in paper in some form or fashion until it's able to be entered into the system. Now, the other challenge with the timing of funds being made available over the past 12 months that weren't available before that, we have a tendency to get boxes full of stuff or envelopes full of stuff that is not, full of claims information from retirees that is not uniform and is not standard. Some of them are collection notices, some of them are little stubs that come from pharmacies, some of them have been half consumed by the family pet. And we'd have to try and make sense of all of that and tie it back to all of the individual episodes of care for that patient. And that's challenging. I mean, that's, that's spread it out on the conference room table and try and work through what we have. And that takes time because what we don't want to do is overpay a retiree and have to go back and ask for money back. We don't want to underpay a physician. You know, those of you that have had an episode of care with a hospital understand that you get multiple bills for the same dated service that have different amounts on them and, you know, depending on when those bills are issued. So we have to work through all those. It is challenging, particularly when it comes to us in that fashion and especially when it comes many months, many years in some cases, after the fact.
Follow, if I could.
Mr. Sankar?
So, explain this to me. Is there a form that the retiree fills out and attaches their bill or receipt to and sends it in and says, "This is for Joe Blow for this service," and it has the service receipt attached to it? Or do they just send them in with a post-it note, "Hey, this is from Tommy Brown"?
Yes.
And?
All of, all of the above.
But we, do we have a standard form that they're supposed to fill out?
There's a form that people can complete. We can certainly make sure that everyone has access to that. There is a form that we have made available for any, any one of our plans, frankly, to be able to submit and tie whatever they have, they're asking for reimbursement for. But we have not sent envelopes back to members or sent letters back to them and said, "Hey, you sent us an envelope full of stuff. You need to send us this form or we won't do anything with it." We don't, that's not what we do. We try and make it as easy for people as possible, given the fact that this is a difficult plan in many cases. We're often paying second and third in line behind Medicare and PERS and others. So that makes the coordination of benefits be a little bit more challenging for sure.
Mr. Sankar?
Because if, when I had to file my stuff. If I don't have it on a form, I won't get paid. And I would feel that this, that process should be at least, should be implemented in order to have something like that because that way the retirees who sent it in, they have a copy of what they sent in with the date on it and not just a copy of their bill that they sent in to you to say, "Hey, you know, pay me on this." Maybe it happens, maybe it doesn't. But I would think that would be one small step to kind of at least maybe track things a little quicker potentially.
We can try that. We can ask. I mean, we've tried to meet the retirees where they are and work with what they sent to us as much as we can. It does make it challenging for sure.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So from what I've understood, I mean, two weeks ago, we're operating off the information and it sounded like Council President Lake and Council Member Hanahan, I mean, they had been told that there were boxes of claims that had to be, like, just gone through and processed. Are you saying that they found those boxes and they've gone through them and processed those claims and that, and that you all have sent those to Norwood, like to the auditor's office and to the mayor's office?
All of the, we've been through an audit of 2016 and 2017 claims. I am not aware of boxes and boxes of claims that are yet to be processed. The obvious reality with the C-9 Trust is that there is a dollar limit that, once reached for any particular year, processing additional claims is not relevant or necessary for anyone. But as far as I am aware, as of today, everything that has been audited, an audit has discovered for 2016, 2017 has been sent to the city for funding. And then all C-9 premium reimbursements through June have been processed and will be made available for that funding request on Monday.
Thank you. And just to follow up through the chair, if I could, do you know what the dollar amount was of the, of the request that was sent to the city? Do we have that?
Do not. It was sent to Mr. Stitt.
I'm sorry.
The dollar amount.
The dollar amount of the, of the?
If you know.
Request that was just sent to the city.
That has not been processed and sent to my office yet, but still in the, that's still in the Safety Service Director's office. They have to go through and process that and create the purchase order. There was communication between my office and that office today, but no figure was sent. They just said they were working on it. We should get it soon.
Substantial, sure.
I have the total amounts for '16, '17, and '18 paid, but that's all.
Paid or what is outstanding?
No, paid. I don't have any of the outstanding figure yet.
Sure. Do you want to, it would be, I mean, I'd be interested to know what those totals are.
So in 2016, the estimate of what should be paid to the C-9 Trust is about $400,000. Usually it's 360 to 400,000. There was zero paid in 2016. In 2017, there was $582,431.52. And up until two weeks ago in 2018, there was $96,699.
We don't know which plan years any of those figures are for. We don't know if they're for 2016 plan year or 2017 plan year.
We could pull the invoices for those and, you know, when we did not pay in 2016 to the financial state of the city, we maintained records showing each invoice, the day that it was processed and the day that it came to the city on spreadsheets showing the total amount of each invoice. So that showed when they came in and when they were processed. So, you know, we could, we could pull those, we could pull those invoices and look at them or pull the old spreadsheet. But then you calculate which one's from '16, which one's from '17 based on that, but all I have here is the total amount paid.
So the reason why I asked the original question about knowing the dollar amount is because, I mean, if the dollar amount is $10,000 or $15,000, then we would just say, "Mr. Schlatman, you have more work to do." But if the dollar amount is $300,000 or $400,000, then I would, I could leave today feeling better. I mean, you know, I didn't realize, I didn't know that you all had already sent that over. So, you know, I'm hoping that you're going to continue, like, I'd love to get your cell phone number if you don't mind because I, I would, I want to continue the conversation and just make sure that, no matter what happens after today, that we make sure that we get these retirees caught up for '16, '17, and '18. Like I said, I hope the amount is big and I hope that it's, you know, when I start
So, the reason why I asked the original question about knowing the dollar amount is because, I mean, if the dollar amount is 10,000 or 15,000, then we would just say, "Mr. Schlatman, you have more work to do." But if the dollar amount is 300,000 or 400,000, then I could leave today feeling better. I mean, you know, I didn't realize, I didn't know that you all had already sent that over. So, you know, I'm hoping that you're going to continue, like, I'd love to get your cell phone number if you don't mind because I, I would, I want to continue the conversation and just make sure that, no matter what happens after today, that we make sure that we get these retirees caught up for 16, 17, and 18. Like I said, I hope the amount is big and I hope that it's, you know, when I start calling some of the people that have called me and, you know, and they start getting checks here in a month or two, I hope that we can, you know, yes, innovation is doing their thing. But I also want to make sure that we, if they're not, that you'll continue to work to make sure that we do get all of those processed. So I think it's very important to me, it's very important to the rest of this council that that happens. We want to make sure that every retiree that is owed a dollar that we've committed to paying, that we pay them back and that we don't miss anything. Because I don't want them feeling like they're getting cheated by the city because I know that's not the intention of me. It's, I don't think it's the intention of anybody on council. And I'd like to just make sure that we treat everybody right.
No, I appreciate that. And that's why we've stuck with the city and the retirees through all of this. And that's, that's been the most important thing to me as well is to make sure that they get what they have been promised. And that's why, you know, we immediately undertook an audit when people said that they didn't get everything they were supposed to get for 16, 17. So that's absolutely first in my mind too.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you tell me what the fixed fee is for administrating the program?
It's $32 per enrolled retiree per month.
Now, does that amount on your invoice come itemized?
It does.
It is itemized on the invoice the city gets? So it's 32?
On the one that Brenda gets.
I'm sorry.
On the one that Brenda gets perhaps?
No, on the one that comes to the auditor's office.
Okay, so I'm sorry, it's 32?
$32 per enrolled retiree per month. And it's listed by name.
And what, I'm sorry?
Listed by name, by the retiree's name.
And are there any other fees associated?
Not that, not that we earn. I mean, there's stop loss premium, there are other vendors that we pay out of those proceeds.
And do you know how many people are enrolled? I've been unable to get that information.
It's roughly 120, give or take.
Oh, I was told it was more like 170.
I could be wrong, I haven't looked at an invoice. I did send one to Mr. Stith earlier today, but I didn't look at the employee, the retiree count.
You have that in the invoice?
This on the last page. What I've got on the last page of what was just sent me is single 73, family 50, administrative fee is charged to 123. 123.
123.
And then bill class, single 73, EE plus SB 46, family one, EE plus child three, group totals one, two, three.
So do you say, I'm sorry.
123.
123 is the total?
Yeah, it's a very small.
There's different classifications on this.
It's all the same charge regardless of what they're enrolled as.
It's for the family coverage, so there's 46 families.
Could be two or three people.
Yeah. So many people per family. Okay. So it may be more
People.
People. Just, that's the number of retiree or units, yes.
It's, that's been a fairly consistent, for lots of reasons, a fairly consistent number for quite a while.
I can tell you, there was a Financial Planning and Supervision Commission meeting earlier today and the commission is anxious to get this resolved as well. It was on our agenda and they asked about it and I did give them an update and told them that Mr. Schlatman would be here this evening. So it is on their radar as well. They are anxious to, you know, we can have access to funds that we normally wouldn't have access to because they want to have all of our bills paid, which is a benefit to all of us, to get this resolved in a timely and professional manner. So, Mr. Thompson.
And I'm sorry, just to clarify, once this, this invoice that was sent today or yesterday or whatever is paid by the city, then we are caught up to June?
Through 2016 and 17.
Right.
Year-to-date 18 will come Monday.
Okay. But then, up until now on Monday?
That will incorporate all the claims that we have received, we've processed and as far as I'm concerned, we're aware of.
All right. Thank you.
Now, understand people do have two years?
Yes.
To file claims.
Correct.
So.
From the data service.
Mr. Sankar.
Right. So that could mean all the 2016 claims are not paid, it's just what you see. Sure. Just to follow up on that real quick.
Yes.
Typically, on a good day, say, Mr. Bonzel sends in a claim and you receive it on June the 30th. Typically, what would be, but when you process it, make sure it's legitimate and he's in the program and he is due that reimbursement, typically how long would it take to enter that in, compile the invoice or whatever, and then send it to the city? Would that be 30 days, 45 days, 60 days? I mean, it, just roughly, what would be like an average or worst-case scenario typically?
For paper claims, our service standard is 15 days from data received to data entry and adjudication. Meaning we've received it, our data entered it, we've looked for duplicates, made sure that provider's legitimate of the reimbursement. We have what we need in order to process the claim completely. So that's 15 days for a paper claim, substantially less for electronic. Once it's been finally adjudicated, it then falls to voucher status or a funding request. That's what you, we send every Monday. We will be sending every Monday to the, to the city to fund.
Follow up.
Yes.
So typically, worst-case scenario, if something even falls through the cracks, it could be 45 days.
It should not be.
Worst case.
Yeah, typically claims that take that long either involve a substantial audit, meaning there's a lot of information that we've got to reconcile, or, or there's information in addition that we need from a healthcare provider and it depends on their responsibilities.
Follow up.
Mr. Sankar.
And these submissions of claims, they could either come from the physician's office or the retiree or the C-9 trust plan member.
Most commonly, the retiree.
Yes. Okay. And, but, and they could potentially overlap if the physician happened to send one in and then the retirees happened to send one in. So that's one of the things we audit for.
Correct.
Good information. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Ms. Stevenson.
More of a summary comment and then a question. So in terms of the timeline, it sounds like two years and 45 days is the time in which someone might expect a response from when they submit?
No.
Like up to two, I mean, I'm sorry, after the data service. So after the data service, there's two years in which someone can submit a claim and then from that point, 45 days.
Right, once you receive it.
So from the city's perspective, it sounds like, and this is more of a comment, not that I'm asking you a question, it sounds like the city is potentially waiting to receive a bill for two years and 45 days.
Presuming that that retiree hasn't exhausted their limit for that reporting period.
Okay. And this is the question, is there anything in the agreement that we have that designates those 45 days or are you just sharing with us what is routine practice?
Routine practice is substantially better than 45 days, but I agree that, you know, if something were to kind of go haywire, 45 days would be the maximum amount.
But that's not in the agreement that's currently in place with the city, a timeline for processing?
I don't believe there's a specific number of days associated with processing a claim. In many cases, it's dependent upon the information that we received at the outset and then who else we have to gather information from.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hanahan.
If I could follow up to her there. Could you get us a, could you provide counsel with a copy of the agreement you have with the city?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you. I do have one more. During the discussion, it was said some, there are some plan participants who have not had claims paid to them, but they think they have submitted claims. What's your recommendation for a next step for those members? I know the audit's been done for 16, 17, and you're getting ready to do year-to-date. So I'm just curious, like, what should people be doing at this point?
So if people have already submitted that information to our office and they haven't gotten a response, I have and I will leave my card and they can contact, try and contact me directly and I'll make sure that it gets pushed through.
Thank you.
Or they get a response, at least whether it's reimbursable or not, it's another question.
Mr. Clark.
I believe in a discussion in our last meeting, several of the retirees had been advised to not submit claims until this issue was resolved with the back payments and things. So they should go ahead and submit now everything.
Yes. If anybody waited for that, yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hanahan.
Thought I was done before, but they keep bringing up points. What happens to those people who have not been paid and all, you know, they're, and your company will say, "We don't have those receipts," and they're older than two years ago? Are they going to be able to file those? Because I know many people who have claims farther out than two years. And I know there's a lot of claims that, or I suspect there are a lot of claims that are going to come back and they're going to say, "We don't have anything." Are you going to accept claims for longer, I mean, for longer because if they were lost, misplaced, whatever, how, is there a plan, what do we, what gets done at that point?
Well, anybody who has claims that are outside the two-year filing window will do an evaluation of exactly how much of that there is, see if there's any opportunity for us to identify if claims were received within the timely filing requirement, and then present it to the city and ask for guidance.
Mr. Bonzel.
Ultimately, it's the city, the city's the plan sponsor, it's the city's money to reimburse. So if we come back and we have five claims and the city says, "Go ahead," then we go ahead.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I was, I appreciate the question from Council Member Hanahan. I, I mean, many of the people that, you know, they might have, you know, there's claims that might have been submitted in 14 or 15 and because we didn't pay for so long, you know, they didn't get the 45-day window or what, 60-day window to get that check because we weren't paying. So they probably thought, they could have thought that, oh yeah, there, it's in process, it's ready, you know, it's going to get here eventually. And then we start paying out claims in 17 and 18, they don't get it, now they're like confused at what to do. So I would just, yeah, very strongly encourage, you know, innovation to do exactly what you said, to evaluate those claims and then to bring them to the city so that somebody will make a determination as to whether they should be paid.
Just to clarify, if there was a claim that we received, we processed, we put into the system that was made available to the city on a funding request, all those checks have been or will have been released as a result of the funding request that was just received. So it's a question of whether or not something was received, okay? So there's not?
Right. And I guess, and that's, I appreciate you clarifying that. I mean, what, yeah, it wasn't that they didn't get paid because of something that you all did, it's more that they wouldn't have known that the claim wasn't processed because they weren't getting checks for anything.
Absolutely agree. And that's, I absolutely agree. And that's, that's
And that's the city's, I mean, the city's fault too, we didn't, you know, so definitely.
Yep.
Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up to Council Member Clark's question. Did your, did your office, department, organization send letters advising members not to file claims?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. We were hearing in our last meeting that
I think that was where, we had heard those were verbal instructions.
Those were verbal instructions. Is there an opportunity to contact members via letter and let them know they can still submit, whether it's for evaluation? It sounds like there's been a lot of confusion. I'm just thinking, other than listening to today's meeting, how do we really help close the gap, let people know what your number is and how to move forward?
Sure. We can, we can consider sending a letter to everybody for sure.
I think maybe that might be better done once people get their money and see if anything is missing or whatever. I think that might be the time to perhaps
Thank you.
Send out those letters so that it's not a repeat of, maybe, maybe what is being submitted will, will take care of a vast majority of them. We can hope, we hope.
So just to follow up on that, Madam President, would you advise then that we listen for feedback from members to see if a letter is needed after checks are distributed?
I can almost guarantee you that he will get feedback. I can guarantee you that.
Yes.
And I'm sure that if he's getting feedback, the gentlemen who are kind of leading the charge will be getting feedback and I will be getting feedback. So I'm sure that I will be aware of it as well. So, Mrs. Hanahan.
In response to what you said, I actually was told not to file any more claims, to wait because things are so messed up. I would just confuse things to have more bills on top of what I have. And so I said, "Okay, I will wait to file those." So, yeah, that did, I actually heard that and that's what I was advised to do also.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President. Just to follow up, Mr. Bonzel was talking about it. If there are claims from 2015, I would lay odds that you wouldn't still have those laying around and to file once those are filed and the two-year window has expired. I would assume that those have been either disposed upon or that I, I would doubt very seriously that you would have any claims that were made in 2015 unless there was some circumstances of which you're waiting for a response from somebody to see if that is eligible for payment. So I guess, like you were saying, James, that if there were some there, and as you had mentioned too, it would be dumped at the city to kind of, after you looked at them and said, "Well, they would, would have been eligible if they would have been filed on time." Then it's a matter of he said, she said, "Well, I sent it in." Well, there's no copy of a, of anything except for the fact that you don't have it, they said they sent it, and then it's up to, okay, well, I guess we'll be the nice guy and we'll pay it. But I would have to assume, maybe that's wrong of me, but that you would not have anything that was sent in to you prior to 2016 unless it was some circumstance that was pending, waiting for a response from a physician or waiting, something to that effect.
Yeah, I mean, if we would have a claim, then we would need something from a physician. We process the claim and request the information and then if it's not received in a timely fashion, we send a denial of, we don't have enough information to process the claim. So it is, I will not say definitively whether or not we have some of that. We could certainly investigate. I'd be happy to investigate, but we do try to limit the amount of people's private information that we have in paper and around because we want to protect that.
Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. So I guess the question would be, I mean, what if we, I would hope that there would be some, you'd have some records of, I mean, just 2015 specifically, let's just look at that year. I mean, that was, you know, two and a half years ago, I guess would be the end of 2015. So, I mean, what if somebody were to file a lawsuit against the city right now saying that you didn't, we didn't pay out claims in 2015? Are you saying that you don't have any records to know whether we did or didn't pay out for like a specific claim? If we were to, basically if I were to bring to you an invoice for a recipient that had a specific dollar amount, had the provider, had the date of service, you couldn't tell me whether, in that, that date of service was 2015? You couldn't tell me whether we paid that out in 2015 or not?
Oh, certainly we could. Yeah, I mean, absolutely. But what, what we may not have retained are paper records. And if for some reason something did not get entered into a system, I don't know that we'd be able to find that. But everything's supposed to be entered in the system, date stamped, entered, and then, you know, once we have enough to process the claim, you know, paper is destroyed and claims are processed, check issued, we can certainly demonstrate all of that.
Okay. So that's reassuring that, it sounds like an investigation could be done. Now, still, there would be, have to be a determinant made by whatever city representative needs to make this determinant. I mean, it's not going to happen here on council floor, so it'll happen somewhere. But it sounds like at least though you have enough information to do like at least a little bit of an investigation to determine whether we think that that claim was paid, that that specific reimbursement was paid or not, so.
Yeah, we absolutely know what was, we can track back to a check number, issue date, everything that was tied back to that specific claim and data service, so.
Okay. That's reassuring. Thank you for that.
Yeah, that's, no question.
Follow up. My point was that if something that wasn't paid, we can track what was paid, you know, but if something wasn't paid and I said I sent this claim in, in January of 2015, and they would say, "Well, we don't show any record of receiving that," then they wouldn't have, I wouldn't think, they would have a record of what was paid, but I, so that's, that was, you know, that's what I was following up on yours was that.
And that, and you, sorry, I'm probably out of turn here. You made a very valid point. The funding issue, right, the lack of funding or the slow funding component of it does present the opportunity for, it eliminates the opportunity for the recipient to say, "Hey, I haven't gotten my check in a timely fashion the way I always do. What's going on? Did you get this? Did you receive it?" Within the two-year submission cycle, right? I mean, so if, if claims are being received, funding's being allowed, checks are being issued on a routine basis, that is one of the check digits that we rely upon for someone to call us and say, "Hey, I didn't get my check the way I normally did. Can you, can you look into this? Did you receive it? Did the facts fail?" And that is one of the challenges we have.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. I think people are feeling much better informed. Feel better of, I am delighted to hear that, well, I'm not delighted about, oh, I also have a lot of money, I'm delighted to hear that we have received some bills and that hopefully retirees will be getting caught up soon.
Thank you, and thank you, sir. Thank you for the opportunity, and I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we will move on to our regular schedule, and that is consideration of the ordinance amending Section 505.15 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Norwood, Ohio entitled Prohibited Animals as amended.
Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we would have all three readings of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel. Yes. Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance amending Section 505.15 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Norwood, Ohio entitled prohibited animals as amended. Ordinance amending Section 505.15 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Norwood, Ohio entitled prohibited animals as amended. Ordinance amending Section 505.15 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Norwood, Ohio entitled prohibited animals as amended.
Mr. Thompson.
Move, motion to pass the ordinance.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. I know we don't always have cover sheets that are attached to these, but I wondered if anybody could speak to this request and what exactly was amended.
I will be happy to speak to that. I had asked the, I, I actually requested that the ordinance be prepared, and I had some family emergencies this week, and so I, or last week, I had asked if it were possible for the law department to complete that, and obviously, they were not able. So I apologize for that. I did ask that this be passed. A resident who has rabbits, who has chickens, upon inspection of their very clean chicken coop, was told that they couldn't have rabbits. And indeed, rabbits were prohibited from the City of Norwood. And knowing this person and her very clean coop and the way she cares for animals, and other people had come and said, "Why, why do we not allow rabbits?" It seems trivial, but for people who have animals, this person was told they had 10 days to get rid of their rabbit. So we looked into amending the ordinance. Mr. Moore did some consultation with the City of Cincinnati. They don't really have any prohibitions on it. They had looked at some prohibitions, and he had gotten some information from them. We kind of tweaked it to be more Norwood appropriate. They had, depending on how many square feet of your backyard, you're allowed to have so many animals, and it was kind of bizarre and very cumbersome. So we wanted to make it easy for people who are very good pet caretakers to be able to have animals. And so what is, what is amended is strictly the rabbits. On page two, it starts at section number four, that now says that you can have four rabbits as long as you keep them within standards. And it's the same as the chickens, single-family or two-family owner, occupied parcels, that they are in cages outside, clean, the same prohibition, the same things that you have to have for chickens. They're outside, they have to be kept in pens and clean. No, there is not going to be any license for them. It's just simply, the health department would be able to, if they received a complaint, they could be permitted to inspect the property upon reasonable notice to determine whether or not a nuisance exists. And that's simply what it is. And I apologize for that not being on. And hence, we have all of the people here with the rabbit ears on, who would request that this ordinance be considered. So it was certainly driven from citizenry up, and this is in response to their request, which I found to be very reasonable. Mrs. Hanahan.
I'd just like to say that I have a very green yard, and I have about 50 bunny rabbits in my yard. And there's not much you can do with them.
Well, those are wild ones, yes. No, these are pets. And there are prohibitions against having different sexes in the same pens and all that stuff. As I told them before, usually, there's a reason why things are on the books, and at one point in time, I think somebody probably, who was not very responsible, had them running around the backyard. They multiplied and multiplied and multiplied, and then dug tunnels and was, was definitely a nuisance. So this is for responsible pet owners. And so if we find anything other than that, they're still prohibited. It's the, for people who are responsible pet owners to be able to keep them. So, and on this day of financial recovery, it seems silly, but it's very important to them, so. And again, it was citizen-driven, and so I applaud these people who are passionate about it. And thank you for people who say that we're not responsive or that, you know, government isn't responsive. This is a perfect example of being citizen-driven, so thank you for caring about our city. I appreciate it. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Stevenson.
Just one other question. I know that you said in your summary there wasn't a permit fee. Is there a reason why?
Um, there's, rabbits are rabbits. I mean, rabbits are pets. I think the reason we wanted to have the permit for the chickens was to make sure that they didn't have roosters, that weren't going to be bothering neighbors. These are just, and the health department said, "Please, please, no. We don't want to go inspecting everybody's rabbit pens. We don't want to do that. We just, you know, if there's a problem, we'll respond to complaints." It was definitely, the health department did not want to have permits.
Thank you.
They were involved in this from the very beginning. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries.
Yeah, we certainly don't get a lot of applause, so we appreciate that. We will move on to second reading of ordinances, and that is an ordinance denying the request for zoning code text amendment to add market gardens as a permitted or conditional use in residential zones. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Clark.
Need to have the second reading of this ordinance.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I, I have to apologize, I wasn't here for the first reading. I was at the beach. So I wanted to say, as I said, I didn't get to because I wasn't here for the first reading, but I don't agree with this ordinance and/or with the suggested, suggestion provided by the Planning Commission. I think that as Norwood looks to the future, we need to open our, our minds to new kinds of businesses that might want to come into, into the city. Here we have a situation, we have a small business owner who is not in the city, who actually wants to bring a business into our city. In doing so, they would use a plot of land that had been vacant for over seven years to do something that's not that disruptive. I mean, it's growing plants and harvesting those plants. And I see on the, on the, on the ordinance, on the recommendation from the Planning Commission, they didn't really provide any reason why they denied this request. And as a matter of fact, the request was conditional, so it's not like we were opening, planning up to, to turn our city into an agrarian society with, with gardens and farms posting all over the place. So I just wanted the council to know that I'm actually, I will vote no on this, and would ask that you may be considered to do that as well, and, and maybe consider actually not implementing this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you. It was asked that a letter be sent to Mr. Building Department.
Stoker.
Stoker. Asking for the reasons why they wanted this opposed, or they oppose this. And unfortunately, the letter we got back was very generic. And, I mean, I would like to, I also would like to know, I mean, actual specific reasons, not just it'll affect property values. So I'm in agreement. I'd like to get more information on this.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see, I'm sorry.
Mr. Thompson.
I don't see how having a garden and an unused plot of land could affect property values any more than having a vacant plot of land. So if that's the case, I disagree with the, the suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to have the second reading. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
No.
Mr. Clark.
No.
Mr. Thompson.
No.
Ms. Stevenson.
No.
Mrs. Hanahan.
No.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes.
By a vote of two in favor, five against, the motion fails.
Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I mean, we will have to eventually act somehow, so we'll have to either...
We have to act somehow.
We have to pass, and I know that we just need time, but I just wanted to just make that known to citizens that, you know, just denying this doesn't let it go through. We would have to pass an ordinance that gets six out of the seven votes in order to override something that the Planning Commission did. So just, that more as a point of information, so I look forward to seeing what comes next.
Mr. Thompson.
I want a motion that we put this in committee.
Which committee would you like?
I would suggest economic development. But I would be happy for Ms. Stevenson to suggest another committee if she doesn't want it in, economic development. But I think, I think we could address it best in that and decide if we want to request a new ordinance, or if, or if we want to just go ahead and go with this.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Clark?
Could I?
No. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Clark, what's, yes, Mr. Clark.
I was just going to ask if we could request that Mr. Stoker attends that meeting, or someone, a representative from the Planning Commission, to just give further feedback.
Madam President? Yes. Thank you, Madam President. This is an unusual situation. Counsel, my tendency has been, when these come out of the Planning Commission, to at least have a draft of an ordinance going the other way. But for this, because there were different options, and I figured council wanted to go a different way, that they would want to explore different options, I didn't know how to write it. So the, the council wants to reconsider this and look at reversing the decision of the Planning Commission. Yeah, putting it in committee is the place to go. I would also suggest that you invite Greg Oros to that meeting, because he has a lot of information about market gardens and the way they work. He was here at the last council meeting, just in case somebody had any questions for him. So I would just toss that in for whatever committee meeting it turns out to be.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I mean, I think it would be fine in any committee, but it's, you know, it seems like something that's more housing-related. I mean, I would suggest potentially the Housing Committee, but I'm, again, I think it's, there's no objection that we can do an economic development. I just know that the chairperson there has a lot of things on her agenda already, and so I just didn't want to add more to that.
Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the discussion so far. I want to share a little bit more about my conversation from the applicant, who has not been able to join us. As you might imagine, it's growing season, and they've been delivering produce during our meeting times, which is part of the reason why they did not attend the public hearing. The applicant has actually requested that this not go into committee, and the reason being was it could get stuck there. The counsel, the applicant has participated in drafting protocol for the City of Cincinnati, which was shared to the Planning Commission. The recommendations from our city planner were attached to the ordinance, and those are the best-case scenario and can be revised, put more into language, we feel, as a city would be forward-thinking, but also provide enough provision for any concerns. The, the specific ask was that we consider passing something that is broad in terms of conditions, but simple, that it would include language that says there are no onsite sales as a protection to residents in the area, and that it would continue to be conditional use. The thought was that our BZA could then add more parameters as needed. This is one application, and the way the ordinance is written, building on what Mr. Moore said, this applies to that specific application. So there's an opportunity for council to actually put together some protocols and conditions to give guidance to the BZA that they could use on any request. And that's something they've asked for in the past. When they were asked to consider the murals, they really were at a loss for guidance based on what was in our sign code. So I think that's appropriate, that we provide guidance to our BZA so that individual requests like this could go that route potentially. I also wanted to echo that as, as written, I do not find this particular ordinance favorable. I, I, too, would plan to reject the finding. And I think it's really our time to work towards something that allows us to be more discerning about the type of future we'd like to have. And with that in mind, I would actually recommend that this stay with the committee of the whole. I don't think it's specific to housing, and I don't think it's specific to economic development. I think it's more specific to how we, as a body, want to offer up opportunities that really help people, businesses, residents move forward with their ideas if we choose to put it in committee at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hanahan.
Regardless of what, I mean, not regardless, whatever everybody wants. If they wanted it in my, in the Housing Committee, I would be happy to put it there. I will go along with what everybody wants.
Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you. A question through the chair to councilmember Hanahan. If it goes into housing, would you permit that meeting to be recorded?
I do not know. I won't answer that. I don't know.
Okay.
Anybody's welcome to come to a meeting. Everybody is welcome. It's open to the public. Everyone could come.
Ms. Stevenson.
Just as a follow-up, then, I think since this topic has been at public meetings that have been recorded, it would be helpful to keep it at a public meeting that's recorded so that where the conversation goes is congruent, because I know there are people who have followed along online.
Mr. Thompson.
I'm fine with going then with the committee of the whole. I think it's something that we all probably have some thoughts on, and rather than keep it between four of us, it would probably be best if we all...
So do you want to amend your motion? Because right now, your motion was to place it in economic development.
I would love to amend my motion.
To place in the committee of the whole?
Yes.
Mr. Clark, will you accept the amendment?
Yes.
So now the motion on the floor is to place the ordinance in the committee of the whole. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We will move on to introductory readings of ordinances. The first is an ordinance repealing ordinance, ordinance 66-2000 as amended, which provided for healthcare insurance for retirees, employees who are no longer employed with the city due to disability, and employees who had completed a cumulative total of 20 years of honorable service and declaring an emergency. What is your pleasure, Mr. Thompson?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Since we have basically two ordinances that are the same, only difference being one declaring an emergency and one not, how are we going to deal with that?
My assumption is that if the first one with the emergency clause does not pass, then we'll move on to the next one that doesn't have the emergency clause.
All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Hanahan.
We did, I'm sorry, we did not move the ordinance creating the retirement program.
We did. You moved it to last. That was part of the amendment, was that we, we do that following the ordinance terminating the VIBA plan and trust agreement.
So right now, so we're, we're deciding on if we do it with or without the emergency clause?
Correct. Correct. The reason that was given to move the, creating the new retiree healthcare plan was so that we wouldn't have three plans in the same place, the C9, the Millennium, and the retirees. Yes, Mrs. Hanahan?
Okay, so I just want to get this right. We are repealing, which one are we repealing first?
66-2000 as amended, which provided healthcare insurance for employee, for retirees, employees who are no longer employed with the city due to disability, and employees who had completed a cumulative total of 20 years of honorable service and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I, if, oh, I'm sorry, I followed through. I would like to say something about this.
We probably should have a motion first, before we have discussion, now that we are clear on what we are voting for in the... Ms. Stevenson?
Just as a point of clarity, can you remind counsel and the public the vote counts that are needed to pass when it's an emergency versus not?
It takes six votes to suspend the rules. If it has an emergency clause in it, then it takes five votes to pass. If we are then considering the ordinances without the emergency clause, it still takes six votes to suspend the rules, but only takes four votes to pass.
Thank you.
And it does not go into effect right away as the one with the emergency clause does. And with the emergency clause, it is not subject to voter referendum. Mrs. Hanahan?
I would like to move that we accept the one that has the emergency clause, and may I now state why?
That you want to consider just the one with the emergency clause?
Yes.
Would you like to make a motion, are you suspending the rules, or what are you doing?
No, okay.
Or do you want to remove others?
I would like to remove the one...
We right now have ordinance one and two that have the emergency clause in them. Ordinances three and four do not have the emergency clauses in them. We can either deal with these individually, or we can...
I want the emergency clause to stay.
Or, so your motion is to remove ordinances three and four?
Yes.
Without the emergency clause? That is your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to that? Does everyone understand what we're doing?
I don't think they do.
Okay, so your motion, then, is to remove ordinance number three and number four, remove them from the agenda, the two ordinances that do not have the emergency clause in them?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion? So that would leave the two ordinances on the agenda that have the emergency clause in them.
Oh, I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Hanahan, it's your motion.
Okay. I would really like for counsel to consider what we do here very carefully. After witnessing all the maneuvering going on with these ordinances at the 11th hour last week, I have to say, I am really concerned about what's going on with these. What I'm going to do is ask counsel to vote for the new retiree plan, and against the ordinances to repeal the current plans with the emergency clause, and keep the emergency clause. And if I can explain why. Most of you were ready to plan, or to pass these ordinances last meeting, and then there was a snag, as the mayor came up here and clearly stated he would not sign the new plan if it was passed. Let me tell you what could have happened, because I know there's a lot of confusion, and I've talked to people, and this is what could have happened. Okay, we have the new plan that we passed. We had the old plan, and if the old plan was repealed last week, we would have the new plan. With that, the mayor said he wouldn't sign it. And since the mayor wouldn't sign it, it could be gone, and the retirees have no benefits at all. That quickly, the retirees would have no benefits, because we have removed this, and the mayor has not signed for the new plan.
Mrs. Hanahan, can I interrupt you?
Yes.
The ordinances do say that they are repealed effective December 31, 2018, and I don't like to look at my phone during the council meeting, but I did get a text from the mayor, who said, "If he is telling the truth, I'll sign the ordinance when we receive both invoices."
Yes, well, and that's an if. People change their minds. What I want to say is, I say that removing the emergency clause was done to manipulate the vote count, and you, oh, I'm sorry, and, and that's to be done when we, if, when we vote to repeal the old plan. And the timing for getting, well, the new plan isn't in effect here. There is no way of knowing how anybody is going to vote. And I don't want to take the chance of the seniors losing their benefits. If we rescind the old plan, and the new one is approved, now, the mayor last time said he would not sign it, and I'm going by what he said last time, because you never know who's going to change their mind. Again, no one can predict if there'd be a supermajority to overrule this. And if it occurs, I will say again, the retirees have no benefits at all. The new one hasn't gone into effect, the old one you've taken away. I'm asking for counsel to vote for the ordinance keeping the emergency clause in, and to keep the old plan until the new plan is signed by the mayor. And I know at the last meeting, it was said it would be fiscally irresponsible to have two plans on the book. Now, look at us. Is anybody on this council going to let that happen? I mean, that's far-fetched. And I think, you know, the mayors, the retirees have been told all along that we would not take it away before the other one was in effect.
Is this... Thank you.
Mr. Stif, is this the issue that was raised the last time, if that happens, we'd have three plans in place and fiscal...
The issue that I was concerned about that I raised is, if there's currently three plans in place, if we have not gotten rid of the other one, and we adopt the new one, that does not fit within the fiscal emergency plan, because the plan allows for one or the other. And so if we, there's a concern as to if we create a new plan and we don't eliminate the two old plans, that doesn't fit within the fiscal emergency plan adopted by this council and approved by the Fiscal Emergency Commission, and that's something that we need to talk to the state auditor about tomorrow. But that's my concern, is just, either way you do it, just make sure it stays within that total amount that's been approved.
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. So I would like to urge the council to maintain the two ordinances that don't have the emergency clause on the agenda. We can always, you know, let's just say that we have all three readings tonight of the one with the emergency clause, and then we pass it, we can always take off the other two later. It was said by the previous council member that these are on here to manipulate the vote count, that I would say there's probably some half-truths to that, because these are on here in order to allow these to vote, to pass with four votes. Four council members, the majority of this council, voted last time, actually, well, it was unanimous last time, to add, to add the new retiree benefit program. This council's already voted, you're worried that the council's not going to support it, the council's already supported it, we've already voted for it. And I would say that, you know, I've talked to the mayor multiple times, I mean, the mayor is, he's, him and his family, he's a retiree that started before 1975, him and his wife, they're recipients of it, and so they're not, you know, he doesn't want to see anything happen to the program that's going to hurt the other retirees, but that would also include him, too. And so I would just like to ask that we keep these ordinances on here, let's see what happens. You know, even if we don't have all three readings of the emergency ordinance, we can still have a reading for the one that doesn't have an emergency clause on it, and that still at least keeps us moving forward, and that's the goal, is keep moving forward. There's nothing saying that we can't have multiple ordinances at the same time, even though there is slight differences in them, you know, in readings, we probably only want to pass one, but we can still have readings and still keep moving forward on both of them.
Mr. Thompson, you had your hand up before?
I was just going to comment on what Mr. Stif has said about having two, two or three plans on fiscal emergency. I don't think it matters so much, because in the dates, the new plan doesn't take effect until January 1, 2019, and the old plan would be in December 31, 2018. So there, even though we might have technically three ordinances approved at the same time for plans, one of them isn't actually in effect until next year. And so I don't see how that, that to me isn't an issue on financial recovery.
Mr. Stif?
Yes, my, I think that the way the fiscal emergency plan is written does have future years built into it. And if you pass an ordinance increasing the amount that's going to be paid out of a certain key, and you don't pass the other ordinance that decreases it, it won't match the plan as it's set for 2019. My preference, as far as the plan goes, is just to do them all once, whenever you're going to do it, whether it be today, tomorrow, a month from now, do it all at the same time. Trying to do one and not the others is, is from a planning standpoint and from a fiscal emergency plan standpoint, not going to be viable. But you still have to do it once, in my opinion, but that's a few guys.
Mr. Breeden?
Thank you, Madam President. You made a statement, your text message just now, you said that if he is not lying, who is he?
I'm sure he met Mr. Schlotman.
Okay, okay.
Exactly, yes. That, thank you, yes.
Like I said, I normally don't even read that, but when that popped up, and I saw the mayor, and I was like, okay. Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, the third reading of the ordinance creating the retirement benefit program, that does not have an emergency clause in it, is that correct?
That is correct. I would double-check that. It does not have an emergency clause in it. Therefore, only will require four votes to pass. Four votes to have the third reading, and four votes to pass. Yes, Mr. Sankar?
Yes, a couple things. One, we've always said that, you know, we've, we definitely have to have something in place if we remove the others. And if we do remove these others, and we do the emergency clause in them, and they get voted on, and they get approved, and they're removed 30 days from now, or immediately once it's signed. We put the other one into effect to replace what was there, and if everything goes as planned, it gets signed, and then 30 days or whatever from the signature, I believe, again, it goes into effect, so there'll be that plan in effect. If by some remote chance that plan doesn't get implemented or put into effect, we could then go back and reissue the ordinances that we removed to create the old plan again, which would be a pain in the butt, but, I mean, we could, we could do that, so that we're not without coverage. And, and I think it's everybody's intent here, I'm just speaking for myself, but I assume most everybody else. The intent of this council is not to have no plan, period. So I think, however, if we leave it on with the emergency clause, there we go, you know, whether we have all three or one reading of them, come back, however we do it, as long as we have the third reading creating the other one, and the other ones are put in place or repealed, we do know we have a backup where we could come back and reinstitute them, which I don't think anybody would want to do, but that is a possibility, worst-case scenario. So, long and short of it, I believe we ought to repeal the three as stated, and then create the new one when we come to that point to vote, so, my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Mrs. Hanahan?
Taking a chance to reconsider these, if this happened, I don't think is, is fair for the retirees, who we have been telling from day one that we would not take one away without having another one in place. And quite honestly, I have seen things change on a dime with this plan, has, everybody has. And it is just totally unfair, and I'm just asking every councilman to think about it if it was them. You don't know what the guy next to you is going to do, or what they have planned in the future. You know, if, if the mayor doesn't sign it, and we take it away, somebody can come in and say, you know, really, it's not fiscally responsible to get us into another plan right now. And things can change. They want guarantees, and I don't blame them for wanting guarantees, and everybody wants this to pass. Well, my, my thought is, everybody wants this to pass and go through. I want it to pass and go through. I mean, if we need to talk to the state auditors about it, fine, but I think until we have a signed, and I, as you all know, I was ready to do this last week, but when it came up that it may not be signed, and we don't know, and you brought up a good point, Mr. Breeden, the mayor said if. If is a big word. So he's saying, if, what happens if Mr. Schlotman doesn't follow through? As you know, he hasn't followed through, and this company has not followed through for years. So then, he doesn't sign it, and then we come back and say, okay, let's reinstitute this? We don't want to do this. We want to get this plan, the new retiree benefit program, working and on the table. I just think it would be a slap in the face to all the retirees now to back down and have the possibility of taking everything away, when we promised them time and time again, we wouldn't do that. We would make sure another plan was in place, and that wouldn't happen here.
Madam President? Yes, Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. The mayor's not here. I spoke to the mayor, I spoke before the meeting last, the last meeting, the mayor's concerned, and I just want to, I don't want to put this all in context from where we, where we were two weeks ago. So two weeks ago, the mayor said, "I don't want to get rid of the old plans and put in a new plan until..." Well, he didn't have a problem passing the new plan. "I don't want to get rid of the old plans until we know for sure that beneviation is going to pay, we're going to be able to pay the claims that are outstanding." So the mayor's concern has been that we don't abandon the retirees. Now, the concern tonight seems to be that the mayor, that if council passes all three of these, that the mayor will just veto the new plan. But he would not veto the repeal ordinances. That seems to be the fear, and I don't, that's, that's where I'm lost, because the concern was, is beneviation going to pass it? And the problem was, everybody whizzed through on passing the, passing the, passing the new plan, and then the snag came from, well, we don't want to repeal the old one until we want to make sure that they're going to get paid. But if the concern is whether or not the mayor is going to veto the new plan and let the repeals go through, I'm not sure where that, and I'm speaking, I'm taking the liberty of speaking on behalf of the mayor, the mayor would never do that. And I just wanted to toss that out, because I can't see that as a remote possibility, that, that he would even come close to doing that. If, if that's the concern, if he's going to repeal, if he's going to, if he's going to try to veto one, he's going to, he's going to veto all of them.
I, I will partly agree with you, Mr. Moore. I know we have gotten one, we have gotten one invoice, you've gotten, Brenda has already started...
She is working.
She has started to do a requisition or, you know, to have a, a purchase order generated for one, and then my notes say that the C9 would be up to date by Monday, so that would be the second one. The mayor doesn't have to sign them right away, he has 10 days to decide, yes, Mrs. Hanahan?
If I can respond to Mr. Moore, the mayor never said he didn't want to get rid of the old plan. The mayor said he would not sign a new plan.
Well, we're talking on behalf of the mayor, which we probably shouldn't do.
Which we probably, and so we're just going by what people, what he's going to do, we're going to have to just guess by.
Mr. Breeden?
Thank you, Madam President. If, if I'm at home, and I'm, I'm on this program, if I'm a retiree, I'm sure that they appreciate, Ms. Hanahan, you've really done well representing the retirees, and I just want to, no matter what happens on this vote tonight, none of us want to do wrong by our retirees. And, so you've done well of representing them, so I just want to make that known, that I respect that, and I'm sure the retirees at home are looking at you, and they're really, you know, appreciating what your stance is on this. So that's mine, that's mine. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Mr. Sankar?
Just kind of a question, and about beneavations, possibly through the chair, to Mr. Stif, or Mr. Moore, or both, or maybe, Madam President, you may know. But Mr. Schlotman said that in their invoicing fees that they send to us, you know, we have that monthly premium that we pay for catastrophic insurance, then we also pay a $32 per enrollee or whatever, for their processing of their claims. And if we repeal these things here, will they still, how will they be paid that $32 per person to all the claims are? person to all the claims are finally paid? Because we could be paying them $32 per person, or whoever files a claim, for, you know, up to 2020, potentially.
Mr. Stitt?
Yes, all the discussions that we've been having with the state auditors who wrote the fiscal emergency plan have anticipated that there will still be a two-year period where we will be paying them at least some fees, because they're still going to be managing all these bills from 2018, plus anything still owed from 2016 and 2017. So they're still going to be paid to do that job through 2019, and well, probably into 2020, until this is all wrapped up.
Follow-up.
Yes, Mr. Sankar.
Basically, the catastrophic premium will go away, but a processing fee per person, it probably wouldn't be per everybody, but per person who files claims, I would assume. But anyhow.
It's not exactly per person when you look at it, because their numbers, they're doing singles, and they're doing employee plus spouse. That's why they got the number 123 instead of 172, because they're doing an employee and spouse together.
As a unit.
As a unit, as one fee. We would still, now, the large premium would probably stop in January of next year, although there would still be significant bills coming in, probably through that first quarter, from that self-insured plan. And in talking, and we may even want to bridge that a little bit with some type of a liability tale, but that's something to discuss once we get kind of close to that point, and talking around where our exact liability is going to end with that.
Sorry.
Just a follow-up. And that was, I think, one of the concerns we discussed a couple of weeks ago. If all of a sudden this all goes away, then we're not paying them anymore to process these claims, there's no hurry for them to process them. But there still is a fee that will be associated with them processing the claims, so they'll still be basically employed by the city to be paid to handle these, this process.
Probably for the two-year tail, legally required.
And that's in the plan, isn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, I think the state auditor's anticipated that we'd have that for a couple of years.
Good, okay.
Mr. Thompson?
And that is completely independent of the removal of these current ordinances, correct?
That's correct. Our liability is to pay everything up until these ordinances.
And beneavation contractually is independent of these ordinances being terminated?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? So to make it clear, the motion on the floor is to remove ordinances number three and four under introductory readings of ordinances, and those are the two ordinances that do not have the emergency clause in them. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
No.
Mr. Clark.
No.
Mr. Thompson.
No.
Ms. Stevenson.
No.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
No.
By a vote of five, no to yes, the motion fails. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we have all three readings of ordinance one.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
I'm sorry, you didn't see my hand, there was discussion. I just want to know, what are we on ordinance one? Are we talking this way?
No. Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
You can do it. Mr. Braden.
Yes.
So we have six to one, is that correct? All right, by a vote of six to one, the motion carries. Have all three readings, please.
Ordinance repealing ordinance 66-2000 as amended, which provided for health care insurance for retirees, employees who are no longer employed with the city due to disability, and employees who had completed a cumulative total of 20 years of honorable service and declaring an emergency. Ordinance repealing ordinance 66-2000 as amended, which provided for health care insurance for retirees, employees who are no longer employed with the city due to disability, and employees who had completed a cumulative total of 20 years of honorable service and declaring an emergency. Ordinance repealing ordinance 66-2000 as amended, which provided for health care insurance for retirees, employees who are no longer employed with the city due to disability, and employees who had completed a cumulative total of 20 years of honorable service and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
No.
I'm sorry, did you say no?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
No.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes.
By a vote of five to two, the motion carries. Move on to ordinance number two, ordinance terminating Viva Plan and Trust Agreement and Declaring an Emergency. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we have all three readings of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
No.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
By a vote of six to one, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance terminating Viva Plan and Trust Agreement and Declaring an Emergency. Ordinance terminating Viva Plan and Trust Agreement and Declaring an Emergency. Ordinance terminating Viva Plan and Trust Agreement and Declaring an Emergency.
Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
No.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
No.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
By a vote of five to two, the motion carries. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we amend the agenda to remove ordinance three and ordinance four.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, so because we passed the first two ordinances, these two are no longer needed.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Motion on the floor then is to remove ordinance three and four. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
No.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
By a vote of six to one, the motion carries. Move on to the third reading of ordinances, and this is an ordinance creating the retiree benefit program. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I move we have the third reading of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting either motion carries, please have the third reading.
Ordinance creating the retiree benefit program as amended.
Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that this ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. With this vote, we are fulfilling our promise of ensuring that our retirees are taken care of in a fair way, and I'm going to be proud of it, yes, I'm.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Any other discussion? Motion on the floor is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting either motion carries. We have no introductory readings of resolutions, we'll move on to administration reports. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. First, just kind of happened last week, as my understanding is that all of the back taxes on the city-owned properties have been paid, regardless of the fact that we didn't really have enough in the key, the state auditor said just pay them all. So we should be good to file exemptions as soon as the treasurer's office downtown is done dealing with semi-annual payments. They're a little busy right now, and then should be free to sell, so that's something. I also wanted to thank TA for the nice chairs we have, for going out and scratching, it was unbelievable, it was, the chairs were actually a bone of contention in a massive budget battle at one point in 2000, I forget, I think Mr. Schneider was chairman of finance at the time. I wanted to report, I sent council a letter that has more detail, I thought their questions might come at the last council meeting, but I wanted to send a letter with some more detail that I really wanted to talk about. There was a news story in early June about a registered sex offender who had filed his address at 1700 Hopkins, which is Lower Millcrest Park. And notices were sent out, he's on the list, where notices have to be sent out to neighbors, and apparently the media was contacted, how can somebody, I don't know, how can somebody be living in a park, this doesn't seem right? Actually, the Friday before that, and the thing was June 2nd, the Hamlin County Sheriff's Department sends out a list of here are the new people that have registered in the county, and a copy comes to the law department, police department, and other law enforcement bodies. And the practice of my office has been to check that list, review it, see, oh, there are any new ones in Norwood, let's get together with the detectives and see who's within 1,000 feet of here, 1,000 feet of there. One of the things, one of the issues that came up, especially in my first several months in office, was that there's state law requirements, says if you're a registered sex offender, you can't live within 1,000 feet of a school or a daycare center. Norwood has its own ordinance that's more restrictive, and that includes you can't live within 1,000 feet of a park. And so, a number of these individuals are on probation, they contact the probation officer and say, hey, listen, is this address okay? Is this where I'm thinking of moving? And they would say, oh, yeah, you're more than, you're fine. And then it would turn out that they're in Norwood and be within 1,000 feet of a park. And so it took three, four, five, six months of back and forth for us to educate the Hamlin County Probation Department and the sheriff's office, that Norwood has more restrictions. If somebody comes to you beforehand, send them to us and we'll check. And so, we have a lot of this. We have yet to have to file an actual lawsuit to get a court order for somebody to move, but we've come close a couple of times. This one came across the desk on, it was Friday night at like 8:00, and on Monday, Mr. Gary Sodda said, well, that's Millcrest, and contacted the police department, can you go find out what's going on? So they went down there, and they found a tent, but they couldn't find this individual. And after several tries, they kept finding, could not find, couldn't track him down, but there was a tent and some other stuff there. So finally, after some discussion, the idea was, hey, let's do this, let's take all his stuff to the police department, and we'll put up a letter from Mr. Gary from the law department that says, you can't live in a park, you can't be here after 11:00 PM at night, you can't live within 1,000 feet of a park in Norwood, this is no good, the police department has your stuff, if you want it, you can come and get it. So, I think it was like three or four days later, he showed up at the police department and said, I'm here for my stuff. They give him another copy of the letter, another talking to about it, and he took his stuff, and it turns out, Mr. Gary, he has a pending charge for failure to register, felony charge in Hamlin County Common Police Court, and he had a court date set for, I think it was the date of the council meeting, the last council meeting, Mr. Gary went down there and met with the prosecutor and his attorney, and said, here's the letter, here's the notice, let him know he can't live in Norwood. He's currently registered at a, living under a bridge at, on the east side of downtown, and I'm not sure where, but he's not here. So I just wanted people to know, there's things, these things that come up, and there's a lot of people that get involved, it seems like a simple situation, you can't be there, run him out. Well, the hard part's finding the guy, the hard part's letting him know about this, and I wanted to thank Mr. Gary, and I've got the list, I don't forget anybody, Detective Dan Riffle, Auxiliary Police Lieutenant Bud Rich, Police Officer William Dossenbach, Sergeant Dave Lewis, and Sergeant Kim Brucker, they were all involved in this, and I just wanted to thank them and let people know that, you know, actually, we are paying attention to this kind of thing, and do what we can to get it taken care of. And I don't know if anybody's got any questions to be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions? Thank you for your good work. We have other requests to address council. Virginia Wallace, do you still want to speak? Clint Kersting and Andrew Senni, would you please come up? If you'll give us your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes to address council unless council has questions, if you will take them.
Sure.
Thanks for your patience.
I'm Clint Kersting.
I'm Andrew Senni.
From Midwest Financial Partners, and thank you for allowing us to address the council. We are financial planners based out of Norwood, and we do the deferred comp benefit for a lot of townships, cities, villages, in the surrounding area. We also do that benefit for Norwood City Schools. So recently, we've had some employees of City of Norwood contact us, asking if we can help them defer deferred comp plans through Norwood. And so we were instructed to come to council and address the council, to see what steps we need to take next.
Some of those employees address customer service being an issue, and I heard that came up earlier tonight, and invited someone, our group tells local that they could come. So it's one of the reasons why they urged us to come, and see if we could come to them.
So for those who don't know what deferred comp is, real quick, it's kind of your guys' version, a lot of you guys might have 401Ks, because in cities, the version of a 401K, it doesn't cost the city anything to offer the employees, and it's a voluntary benefit for the workers.
And right now, the only work, the only deferred compensation that is available to employees is through OPRs, Ohio Public Employees Retirement System, is that true?
I believe you guys offer Ohio Deferred Comp.
Yeah, Ohio Deferred Comp, yes.
Which is a state run.
State run. Mr. Bonzal.
I don't want to get into a huge discussion on council floor about this, I'm not sure exactly where we should put it, but I do have, just you said it doesn't cost anything, so who pays for your services then?
So just like any investment, whoever is invested in the funds pays the management fees. So like if you have an IRA or 401K, there's management fees built into those investments.
So you're saying that if somebody, somebody wanted to use you to help manage their deferred comp, you know, those various things, they would be paying for it out of their own, out of the fees that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just there are fees taken out now, in the Ohio plan.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. Could you repeat the name of your organization?
So we're Midwest Financial Partners, which is a special planning division of AXA Advisors, that's located right in City of Norwood.
4,000 Smithville.
So I guess we're looking for guidance of where, in most cities, villages, municipalities, we usually work with the HR, audit the auditor on to get the plan set up. We originally contacted the city, we were asked to come to the council meeting, and so we're looking for guidance from the Midwest.
There's just a, Mr. Moore, do you have a comment? Do we need to take any kind of legislative action, or just?
If, if the city was going, if this somehow works through the auditor's office, then yes, I'm assuming we'd need some kind of an agreement or something to make this available. If you're just offering, if they're just offering these on an individual basis to employees, I don't know, I honestly don't know really diddly about deferred comp in Ohio, because I don't get any. So, and it's something that never ever crosses my desk, so I would defer to the auditor.
Mr. Stitt?
Yeah. What are your other questions? Sure, we can set up a meeting and sit down and talk about what the options are, the plans that we currently have, and as far as offering, you know, would be up for individual employees, we'd have to see if that's something that would be their choice, see if that's something that would be their choice, if they want to stay with Ohio Deferred Comp, if they want to go with you. It might be something as simple as putting out some pamphlets for the patient, or for the patients, sorry. For the employees, I just worked like six night shifts in a row, so, for the employees to review, we would have to look into what we legally could just have them do on their own versus what might take a, some agreement from the city, but we could find that out.
Yeah, we're not looking to replace Ohio Deferred Comp, just so you know, it's all the townships, municipalities, cities we work in, it's an add-on plan, it's just a second option for the employees. And like I said, it's voluntary.
Good, we'll talk after the meeting. Appreciate it.
I'm sorry you had to sit through all this to find that out.
Yeah, learn a lot.
So, for those of you who don't know, I, when I worked, I was a member of the deferred compensation, it's very nice, it's, it is like a, an IRA, you determine what percentage of your money that you want deferred, so that you don't get paid, it decreases your tax burden when you're working, and so, it's an investment account that you get upon retirement. So, it's just a way to supplement retirement, a very nice plan. Mr. Sankar?
Currently, if an employee wants to opt out or of Ohio Deferred Comp, do they have that option to come to a private and run it through you, or does that affect their deductions, you know, investments? I mean, is, is that their choice, or is it something that they can do both, or one or the other, or?
They do have the ability to do both, in order, if they, let's say they stop one and want to start another one. In order to do that, you have to be a through provider through the city, which is what we're looking to establish.
Okay.
But yes, you can do both, you're just subject to the IRS limits. Then you can stop, start at any time. Yeah, we do, we do currently offer this benefit for City of Norwood Schools.
So, Mr. Steph, you will follow up in the restroom? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say thank you for following up on the recommendation to come and talk with us. I'm sure that there will be people who appreciate that and glad you're willing to take the next step with the conversation with our auditor.
Thank you.
Nice to have a Norwood company too, we appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Next is Pastor Sonny James. If you'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue here in Norwood. First, real quick, each of you council members and those here have, in your email now, my wife, who is the Executive Director of Elevations Enrichment, which is a nonprofit here in Norwood, it's an after, after-school program, which many of you know that it does excellent work, and it's coined after after-school because traditional after-school programs only go until about 4:30-ish. Elevations goes up until 6:00. We also know that we take the kids on outings and events, things of that nature, but the youth mental health first aid training starts this Saturday, and we want to encourage all of you to participate. The first training, we already have over 34 people committed, we're limiting them to 30 per training, so we've already exceeded that. However, we want to extend the opportunity, if anyone still wants to, come on the 30th, and that's the first date. Most of the participants are people that we personally network with here in Norwood, so we can move some of them out to a later date, so that we can be inclusive. Now, her email is on that, her phone number, 513-485-4675 is there, they're posted throughout the community as well. I got to talk real quick, because this is probably the most excited I've ever been to stand before the residents of Norwood for many reasons. But I also want to address, several days ago, there's a group at Norwood referred to as Norwood Quality of Life Planning, and I'm sure some of the council members will address that as well, but I do want to say that I did show up, and I was excited to see people just coming together, talking, okay? And there are still two facets that are part of it that aren't quite yet at the table, but I believe it's moving in that direction, or I pray it is. Now, let me say this real quick, guys. Last year, I was challenged not to give certain kudos or whatever, but I have to do what's right. Tonight, you all impressed me, doesn't matter what side of the fence you are on, residents. When you see a council willing to challenge each other and not just follow status quo, Mr. Brayden made a compliment, and I have to follow up on that. I've been coming and challenging this council for years. I'm 54 years old, very world-versed, very world-traveled, not world-traveled, well-traveled, and I've been around municipalities. I've been very frustrated with this particular municipality. However, tonight, when I saw Marilyn Hanrahan, independent, voice and opinion, and if I may coin the phrase, and I'm, and please bear with me, that we don't want to manipulate votes. There are very few people in Norwood, now again, now, I'm not saying this that I'm on the left or the right of this, what I'm saying is, we've got to continue to be willing to challenge status quo. And to see each of you council members chime in and give your position or make comments. Again, no matter what side someone's on, this is beautiful when we can come together and not all agree, but just because someone poses something different, it doesn't mean that we alienate them. Now, most of you know, it doesn't matter if folks alienate me, because we're still going to do our programming, we're still going to be effective, and we don't bow down to status quo. So, I just want to say, because I've been holding this all night long. And I don't mean this facetiously, I mean this in all honesty. Doesn't matter if you agree with me, it doesn't matter if I agree with you, what I like to see though is people have a brain, people have a heart, and people have some guts to be willing to stand up and just speak on their position, and all of us be willing to just stay at the table and continue to work together. So, God bless you all, if you have any comments or questions, which I'm sure some of you will, but this isn't about Republican or Democrat. And I get sick and tired when we see things that are done here, and everybody wants to side up with so-and-so, okay? We need experience in this community, we're gaining that, we're getting that. I'm very, very, very proud of each and every one of you to at least be bold enough to challenge status quo. And as an African-American man, I have to say that, it thrills me, because the third graders at our elementary schools have an opportunity when they can see you do things differently than what we've normally done in the past. So, keep challenging each other.
Thank you, Pastor James.
God bless you, and I didn't hopefully yell or anything, because I came in late.
I'll keep you in check now, that's our promise.
God bless you, and if there are any questions about the events or whatever, I'm available. Thank you very much.
That's twice tonight, we won't call it. Is there any unfinished business? Unfinished business? Any new business? Ms. Hanrahan, again.
I would just like to say that I got caught in the rainstorm today, lots of streets that had been covered with water, and I went down to Jefferson Hill. Mr. Clark and myself have been working with those residents down there. There was no flooding, I was out in the pouring rain, was talking to the, with the residents, they were very happy, they're not done working there yet, but the water was not up to their front steps. It was going down great, and so, that's wonderful that that finally got taken care of, and I just wanted to note that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. We should have three claps tonight. Mr. Brayden?
Thank you, Madam President. Two things, one thing to piggyback on Ms. Hanrahan, Mr. Manos told me that they found a old, an old sign from Norwood in the drain work, when they came and dug that drain out. So, evidently, that was blocking some of the problems. So, the old Norwood sign, he has possession of it, so that was kind of interesting, down in the drain work, so it was very, very old. Secondly, I want to publicly thank TriHealth for the chairs, tables, I want to make sure we get that out there, and shamelessly plug my wife, who's been employed for TriHealth for around 15 years, and was excited when they moved to Norwood. So, I wanted to thank TriHealth for the chairs again, thank you very much.
I think it would be appropriate if we did a resolution in their honor and had them come here, because I know people have been complaining about these chairs for a long time. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I just, I want to schedule a Parks Rec, Streets and Infrastructure Committee meeting. I'm hoping to do it either the 10th or 11th of July, flexible on time, but I was thinking around 7:00. If people on that committee have a preference, I'm totally open.
July the 10th is a council meeting, so.
Oh, well, that would be a bad.
You could do it before, didn't you?
No, I don't want to do that.
I'm unavailable on the 11th.
I'm okay with the 11th, if that's what.
July 11th?
Isn't that what you said, 10th or 11th?
Yeah, 10th or 11th.
Yeah, the 10th is a council night, so the 11th.
So, then the 11th would be a Wednesday?
Yes. Is that good?
Sure.
7:00?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to circle back to your last comment. I'd like to make a motion that we do draft a resolution and invite TriHealth to a council meeting, and, in asking them to come, but love for them to share again some of what they're hopeful to do now that they're in Norwood.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Brayden? And I will have, can TIA contact them? I'll talk to TIA real quick.
Sure.
All right. Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And just kind of, you know, I can piggyback on all of that, I mean, it's not just the chairs in council chamber, I mean.
There were file cabinets and tables.
File cabinets all across the city, chairs across the city, I mean, there's a ton of furniture that, you know, they helped bring, and I know that Mark Rankin, our building inspector today, was delivering chairs to the Clerk of Counsel's Office, doling them, taking out the old heavy fabric ones that nobody wants to sit on, and so, there was a lot of people, there's many people in the city that was helping with this, so appreciate that. And I do want to praise Councilmember Hanrahan for the work on Jefferson Avenue, and Mr. Clark, I mean, the persistence was definitely, I think, appreciated by the residents.
I don't mean to catch off, but the discussion should be about the resolution.
Oh, because, yeah.
Because there's a motion on the floor, but I'll come to you next.
Yep, absolutely, thank you.
Is there any other discussion about having the resolution drawn up and inviting TriHealth to come? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanrahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, sir.
All members present, voting out motion carries, Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. And so, I just wanted to highlight that, it's like the power of the stormwater drainage fees that are on our property tax bills, and I think it's based on like impervious surfaces, but either way, that's how it was, from my understanding, it's how it was paid for, was through the stormwater fees. So, you know, if, if we want to see more projects like that, because I mean, Elm, Maple Avenue, kind of right at the dip there, there's drains that don't work, there's holes, you know, sinkholes kind of falling into the street, and every time they get, you know, we get really heavy rain, then they, many people on that street experience issues. If we want to be able to do more things like that, then I would encourage us to look at that and see if there's an opportunity to potentially raise that, so that we can truly take care of our stormwater infrastructure and help prevent some of the flooding that residents have seen.
Mrs. Hanrahan?
If I could add, first of all, I don't need praise, but thank you, it's our job. What had happened here, and I just want to mention, these people had been having problems for years. I'd never knew about it, it's my ward, Mr. Clark didn't know about it, he's council at large. And when you have an issue that you don't see being resolved, that's what your council people are here for. So, please call us and let us know, because we're not, if we don't know, we can't do anything. And I think everybody wants the call, because we want to make the community better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanrahan. Any other new business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. I have multiple items, so I will pause, and can let me know if I can keep going. Thank you, Madam President. So, the first is, when I reported out last month on economic development and community engagement, one of the things that I said I would ask council to consider is drafting a letter of support for Queen City Clay, which is a business that's interested in moving to Norwood. I spoke with the owner briefly today, and they are drafting not only a vision statement, but a little bit of their business plan. And so, I want to make council aware that as I get that information, I will work with the Law Department to draft a resolution and attach that information for your consideration ahead of our next meeting, once I receive it. So, it may not be the next scheduled regular meeting, but I wanted you to be aware of that, this is a business that is currently located in Hyde Park, they're very interested in coming to Norwood, Norwood is the only place they're interested in coming to, and if you're, if you did not get a chance to see the owner's presentation live, it was at the last Economic Development and Community Engagement Committee meeting, that Ben Clark was with us, so you can hear him personally if you'd like to go back and watch it, but council, I just wanted to make you aware that the committee reported out favorably that we'd like to support this business coming, so I just wanted to make you aware, you should see a resolution soon, that will be drafted, and some more details to go with it.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevenson. You have another?
Yes, I do have another under new business, so I just want to announce that there will not be an Economic Development and Community Engagement Committee meeting for July. In part, it's the holiday week, and I know I will be on vacation myself. Also, because there's some great work going on throughout the month of July, as Pastor James mentioned, on June 30th, the Quality of Life Planning Committee did a report out of the interviews, and there were about 70 residents who joined us. I know that a lot of the information's been posted online, I believe the video is out there as well, but the planning, the steering committee is working, even today, we were working, to start to synthesize all that information and really start to draft a vision statement. So, when the committee, Economic Development and Community Engagement, meets again, we'll continue with our goal of supporting that project, so we'll hear more of a summary at that point in time of what's happened since the report out. So, I just want to encourage folks, if you've never come to a meeting and you're kind of like, what's going on with all that, please consider coming. I know some people have logistics, so maybe just watch it, but just wanted to share, there is work going on as it relates to the committee, but we will not meet on July 5th.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I just wanted to announce, we kind of hinted at it at the last meeting, but the Cincinnati Shakespeare Company is going to do two to three shows, I guess, here in Norwood this summer. And so, the first one is this Saturday at Northwoods Park at 7:00 PM, so June 30th at 7:00 PM, it's going to be a Midsummer Night's Dream. And all of this is thanks to Maddie Regan, who, she lives on Cleveland, wonderful, wonderful person, she's the production manager for the Cincinnati Shakespeare Company, and she's been able to work with them to allow, you know, some of the flexibility in their dates, and allow them to stop by Norwood and visit us. So, we're really excited about that, just want to thank the city, public works, and everybody for the support that they're providing, but.
Come enjoy the new playground, too.
Yes, oh, yes, and as, you know, Council President Lake alluded to, there is a brand-new playground that was put up by dozens and dozens and dozens of members of the community, so, and thanks to her on that, too. So, we are, it's a great time to enjoy that, Northwoods Park's a beautiful little park there, and so, I think it's going to be a memorable night for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Look forward to it. And audience participation, I understand?
Mr. Mumper was participating in the last one, and he was, he was very good, so yes, they have, there's lots of interaction and participation, it's not like some boring 1500, you know, just skit, like, it's, it's a lot of fun, and very interactive for the children, too.
I want to be pet. Any other new business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. Recently had a couple of conversations with at least three different households, and the concern that I've been hearing is around gutters and trees. A couple of residents are concerned that their neighboring properties have gutters that are not cleaned out, and as such, water is overflowing, and in one situation, overwatering a garden. In another situation, a resident has expressed concern that there are invasive trees in a neighbor's yard, and feels as if it's a threat to their yard. I have not been able to attend either the Housing Committee or Infrastructure Committee, and so, I wanted to ask the other council members, are there other initiatives in place where we're helping residents navigate those issues other than calling city departments?
I know that if you contact the Building Department or Health Department, they can go out and, and look at those things. Anything that, any kind of vegetation that is on another person's property but hangs over your property, they are, you are certainly permitted to trim that back, the portion that is on your property. I think it's more of trying to be a good neighbor than anything else, that, that would be the first route I would take, is to have a face-to-face meeting. But other than contacting a city department, I don't know of any other recourse other than having the conversation with the neighbor. Anyone else has any other ideas, so I'm certainly open to hearing those.
Thanks for that feedback.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So, I just really wanted to acknowledge Lieutenant Mark Rankin is here, as I probably should do this under unfinished, but he gave a presentation in committee, the whole meeting, about our dispatch center, and so, he's here tonight, if there's, anybody does have any follow-up questions about the presentation of the committee, the whole. the whole, I think Mr. Rankin would be willing to, well, you tell me. But I would, I think he'd be willing to answer them if there are any questions, and I appreciate you sitting here for now two hours and 10 minutes, you know.
Happy to answer any questions for now, or if you ever recall me at my office.
Anybody have any questions or comments? I know during the committee of the whole meeting, we talked about that you would forward the presentation. Did we get that? I know I didn't get it, but was that sent out?
I got it. I think it was, at least I received it.
I got a lift that forwarded to decent emails. I had, I think, one email kicked back that said it was inactive, but I couldn't have got it.
Did anybody, everybody get it? Marilyn, you got it?
I didn't get it.
You didn't either.
But I was having problems with my email, too. So I could have been the one that kicked back.
It was.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. I got Gmail.
Maybe they just sent it to council and noted me.
I will send it back out again.
Thank you. Thank you. I did receive it, because I even responded to this.
Great, thank you. Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you. I did receive the copy as well, and I'm going to pivot.
Do you want to come up to the microphone so people can hear you? Or sit if you're more comfortable up here, too?
You can sit, take the next chair.
Nice to share.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you for being here tonight. I did receive the original presentation as it was sent. I believe your email, you said you were sending the copy as is, but there were some edits to the calculations and some other details that I don't think have since been sent via email. Are you able to still provide that?
Yes, it was brought up at the council meeting where I made the presentation, that my math was off. Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. I believe what it came up to be is that I had underestimated the cost of the switch. I could probably correct that. I think the costs are, one issue as far as it goes, as far as the total package, but it has been brought to my attention that maybe I glossed over the program a little too much, and there might be some more questions that are needed.
Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you. To follow up, I would appreciate seeing the new math. There was a lot that you presented. It was very thorough, and I definitely had a little trouble following along, because I think the way you presented the scenarios, the numbers were kind of in the scenarios, so it was hard to track with you as you were suggesting the changes. As I reflect on the meeting, I remember you talking about upgrades that would be necessary due to changes in equipment and technology. And I think I recall you presented kind of like a basic upgrade, and then like a more comprehensive upgrade in the presentation. But what I didn't recall from the presentation, and maybe you just didn't prepare it this way, is it seemed as though we were saying the center as a whole, the dispatch center either stays or goes based on the enhancements to the 911 service. Is that accurate?
Not actually.
Okay.
Cincinnati Bell, who handles our PSAT for the city of Norwood, is getting out of the business as of the first of the year. So we either have to disband our dispatch center and contract with another center, or we have to purchase new PSAT equipment. The cost analysis that I presented, we have a cost that we're paying now for our current PSAT. The new PSAT that I presented, that was researched from available PSAT software providers that we could bring into this area, is far superior to what we have, frankly, to what's out there currently. I have since met with those folks since the meeting and have gotten further reductions in the costs, and it looks on preliminary numbers that we're going to be right at, even exchange from the current cost that we have for our PSAT and upgrade into state-of-the-art software across the board.
At the same cost? Close to the same cost that we have?
Close to the same, maybe even slightly less.
Ms. Stevenson.
Would that be immediately, or would that be after so long? I'm looking back at notes now. There was one cost savings, like year one through five, and then it seemed to level out and or go down year six and on.
The way it works is we have to buy the equipment. Purchase the equipment is one cost. The maintenance and support programs is another cost. By spreading the purchase of the equipment out, we can actually purchase the equipment and pay the support and maintenance of that equipment for those timeframe at a cost that's equal to or less than where we're at now. That's my goal, was to get us to a cost where we're not increasing our cost, but we're keeping them the same or dropping them over the next period of time. Once we pay that equipment off, then our costs would drop dramatically, because it's just, it's a much more technologically advanced system, but the costs are much less. This company has given us phenomenal costs.
So, Ms. Stevenson. Thank you. Just as a follow-up, it sounds like you're continuing to get new information, the overall costs are going down, so we're staying about flat. I have a note, at least to myself. I thought your presentation included a request for a set amount by the end of the year. Is that still in place?
The set, the amount involved in the switch from Cincinnati Bell to the new software, that cost, we're looking at maybe financing that over a period, a number of years. So that's how we're going to split, or how we're going to reduce the cost from having this lump sum, one-time payment, so we could actually finance it over a period of years to keep our costs down.
So just as a point of clarity, there's not an impending need for more funds in order to make this switch?
The way I'm trying to work the program now is if the city decides to keep the dispatch center for the city of Norwood, is that there will be no additional cost needed.
That is quite different from how I understood your presentation, so I'm really glad for the update. I thought there was a necessary cost increase upfront.
It can be confusing at times.
Well, I'm glad you're back and clarifying, and appreciate you following up and sending those new numbers.
I think you're being a good negotiator, so hopefully you're continuing those discussions. Obviously, it got us a reduction, so.
Yes.
We appreciate that. Anything that's cost-neutral is, will go over much better with the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission, trust me. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. So I hate, I'm not trying to put you on the spot here, Lieutenant Rankin, but, I mean, there's just, Mr. Moore's been asked constantly about this meeting in Amberly. Could you at least just give us, like, you don't have to give us any details about, I mean, whatever you can't reveal, it's fine, but can you at least talk about this Amberly meeting, just so we can get it out there?
Yes, let's get it out there, Facebook and all. There's a lot of things, I have a lot of meetings every day, much as I'm sure all of you do at your jobs, and I don't post those meetings on Facebook. I don't answer to, I answer to the chief of police, the captain of the police department. If I, if this meeting that was so controversial was the Hamilton County PSAT director invited all the PSATs from the entire region to a centralized point to go over the new PSAT standards that are put out there by the state of Ohio. State of Ohio has all new PSAT requirements that we all have to follow, guidelines, rules, statistics. One of the such statistics are, how many calls you have to answer, 90% of your 911 calls within 10 seconds. 95% of your 911 calls have to be answered within 20 seconds. We have to chart those statistics and ensure that we're meeting those standards. We are crushing those standards. That is one of about 28, if I can calculate correctly, different requirements that the state of Ohio has put into a guideline. That is what that meeting was for, for us to get that information and to ask questions so that we all know when, right now, we're under those mandates, and we're in a test period from now to the beginning of next year, to our individual PSATs have different dates that we have to file our reports. So right now, we're under the mandates, and we're putting those information together so that we make sure we all meet those needs. That meeting was nothing more than to advise, I think there was about 12 different PSATs there, the standards set forth by the state of Ohio.
And those were the same standards you shared with us at the meeting?
Yes. So the standards that I read on the PowerPoint.
In greater detail, I'm sure you will have.
That's the big secret meeting.
Thank you. Sounds exciting.
I had another one after that, but nobody found out about it, so I guess I skirted that one.
Any other questions of Lieutenant Rankin? Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Good news, we always like that. Thank you. Is there any other new business? Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, just an announcement that next Wednesday, July 4th, will be the fireworks and 4th of July celebration down at Shea Stadium, then at Waterworks Park. I encourage everybody to attend. It's a real nice event that's put on. I'd like to thank all the sponsors that make this possible, and the fireworks committee for their hard work that they put forth all year to put this together. I believe it starts around, is it 4:00 or 5:00 or 6:00? But anyway, it'll go on, and the fireworks will go on at dark.
I did get an email about it today. My understanding is that Mr. Brayden is going to be the emcee, is that correct?
I'm not sure of that. I do put a display on. I actually start the fireworks. There's 20, there's actually 20 children that's picked through our grade schools. I believe they have to write an essay, and for years now, 15 years or 12 years, something. I can't recall, but one child out of those 20 are picked to start the fireworks, and I'm in charge of, I've got this huge display of, it's an Estee rocket with a, you know, like a TNT, boom, and then the kid gets to push the button, the rocket goes, and the fireworks start. It's really exciting if you're a young person, if you get to be the one picked. So I've been doing that for 15 years now. It's very exciting. As far as the emcee goes, that's news to me, but I'll be willing.
I thought that's what I heard. I thought that's what she told me today.
It's exciting. I like, I enjoy it. Thanks for letting me explain that. Thanks.
I pulled up the email here. Let's share for kids. 7:00 the gates open. 9:30 is the stage show, and 10:00 is the fireworks. So 7:00 the gates open. I think that's probably, I guess that's, it's a little bit shorter this year, I know, because they had not as many funds, so 7:00 is when it starts. Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to request permission to leave the meeting for a moment.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll be adjourned by the time you come back. Is there any other new business? We'll move on to communication. We only have one, the Treasurers Report.
Your council members attached are the monthly reports for April and May 2018. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Thank you. Tim Maloney, Treasurer, City of Norwood.
Mr. Clark.
Move that the report be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
All members present, voting aye, the motion carries. We have no absent members. Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I move adjourned.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present, voting aye, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.